If you wish to speak to any item on the agenda or during the public comment portion of the meeting, please fill out a speaker card. Each person addressing the board shall have three minutes to complete his or her comments on each agenda item for which he or she has filled out a card. The Chair has the discretion to determine or alter the time limits on any agenda item. The Board of County Commissioners requests that speakers appearing under the Public Comments section of the agenda limit their comments or presentations to matters relating to county business that are within the Board's control, authority, and jurisdiction.
Good morning and welcome to the January 28th regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. We have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. We have invocation today by Reverend Jeremy Kopic. Did I say that right? Is he here? From Faith Baptist Church? No? Okay. Commissioner Goodson with the pledge, sir.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a little out of order, and sorry for that, but Commissioner Altman offered to say invocation for us. You recognize, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Van. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks and praise for this day. We pray for your guidance as we seek to lead our county into the future. We ask that your will be done. And today, let's remember those seven astronauts that lost their lives on this day, January 28th, at the Space Shuttle Challenger. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Appreciate that, Commissioner Altman. Okay, Commissioners, we do not have any minutes for approval, and so we'll go right into resolutions. And today, we have a very special resolution recognizing John Denninghoff. Yeah, I think we're, you know, you gave me a long one, so I think that means you've got to stand up there. Sir.
Stand before the bar.
A resolution on behalf of the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners honoring John Denninghoff for his outstanding service to Brevard County. Whereas John Denninghoff, a lifelong resident of Brevard County and University of Florida Engineering graduate, obtained his professional engineer license in 1987. And whereas John gained valuable private industry development and environmental engineering experience, achieving Vice President and Chief Design Engineer positions over 14 years in his early career. And whereas Brevard County citizens and county leadership were fortunate to have John join public service in 1996, where he has since strived to uphold and require from engineering and professional colleagues the highest of integrity and standards to protect the citizens of Brevard County for the last 29 years, most recently as county Assistant County Manager, where he's provided unwavering support, assistance, and an exceptional work ethic to the county manager and in prior positions as Public Works Department Director, Transportation Engineering Department Director, and Construction Management Director. And whereas engineers who have worked alongside John express it has been a profound honor and that his leadership, wisdom, and dedication elevate not only the projects he touches, but also the people he works with. He doesn't just solve problems, he anticipates challenges, inspires others, and drives meaningful growth and necessary change. And whereas John has overseen numerous critical programs, projects, and emergency preparation and response efforts, and rose to become widely known as a rock-solid resource for staff, county leadership, and state representatives in virtually any emergency or critical situation. And whereas John has been integral in hurricane preparation for the county and a steadfast leader during storm events for every hurricane since 1996, staying on duty 24/7 in the Emergency Operations Center, ensuring county assets and operations under his control were ready, his teams and infrastructure fortified, and personally inspecting critical infrastructure immediately following the events. And whereas a few of the major projects John has facilitated for Brevard County citizens include the replacement of the AMAX Brewer Bridge in Titusville, won the People's Choice Award in a national contest sponsored by the American Association of Highway, State Highway and Transportation Officials, Ellis Road I-95-St. John's Heritage Parkway Interchange, the Port St. John Parkway Interchange, extension of the Pineda Causeway to I-95, construction of the St. John's Heritage Parkway, the Brevard County Traffic Management Center, the Vera Boulevard I-95 Interchange, the newly constructed Emergency Operations Center, development and implementation of the intelligent transportation system, and elimination of the countywide road resurfacing backlog. And whereas the AMAX Brewer Bridge project resulted in $10,000, in $10,000 that was used by Florida Department of Transportation to establish an engineering degree scholarship fund at Eastern Florida State College. And whereas in 2013, John was named Urban Engineer of the Year by the Florida Association of County Engineers and Road Superintendents, recognized for criteria and project timeliness, innovation, leadership, impact on budget, and impact on the community. And whereas John has served on the Essential Florida Expressway Right-of-Way Committee for Brevard County since 2017, extending application of his professional engineering to regional growth affecting Brevard County and the surrounding regions. And whereas John has announced his retirement effective January 31st, 2025, and leaves behind a legacy of professional achievements benefiting Brevard County and its residents for years to come, now therefore be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the exceptional service provided by John Denninghoff and is grateful for his many years of dedication, exceptional intelligence, and innovation to the benefit of Brevard County and its citizens, done order and adopted in regular session this 28th day of January 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Altman. We have a second by Commissioner Delaney. Clerk will read the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Chair Felton.
Yes. Congratulations, sir. Okay, let's take comments from the board, and then we'll let him have the last word. Does everybody, everybody knows that about John, he has the last word, okay? So, all right, sir, you're recognized.
Some of that was impressive, but, but I know you. But the only thing I didn't see, Chairman, was the engineering of parting of the Red Sea, but John, you will be missed, thoroughly missed. You will come back as the best-known consultant I've ever met, okay? But good luck in your retirement, and all, God's blessed, and everything like that. Whew, that took a lot.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Delaney, you're recognized.
I just want to say thank you so much for all your help. Being a new board member is, you know, there's definitely a learning curve, and having somebody with so much knowledge and experience is really, really helpful. So I just really thank you for your candor and just always being there for advice or, you know, any questions we have to, that we have. You were always there with all the information, which is going to be greatly missed. And so, well, we'll give you some time off in your retirement, but then hopefully you'll let us call you.
Well, my phone number hasn't changed.
Thank you, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Commissioner Altman, sir.
Well, I was, one of the things I look forward to coming back to the Commission was working with John. Of course, now he goes and retires. I, but the retirement, well deserved, and I just want to thank him for his public service. And he's kind of the guy, kind of the person that makes this job enjoyable, to work with such professionals, and he's served our county well.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Atkinson.
So, our time obviously been short together. I know you're going to leave us in good hands, but as was said here, your leadership, wisdom, and your dedication's going to be missed, truly missed by me. Thank you.
And John, I certainly appreciate your many years of wisdom, your historical knowledge. I'll just tell the audience, there's plenty of times where I think I have a good idea, and I go talk to John, and he goes, "No, they tried that in 2001. It didn't work." And so, he's a, he's a really good sounding board. He also lets me just walk into his office, so I take advantage of that. And, sir, you're going to be missed, and I think seeing all the people here today, it's a real testament to your service to Brevard County. You're recognized, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for the kind words. Yeah, before I came to the county, I was a consulting engineer, and I took very seriously the engineering profession concern and dedication and commitment to the public and the public safety and welfare. One of my consultant clients was Brevard County, and so I got approached by some staff members, one of whom is sitting in the back of the room right now, asking if I might want a job at the county. That was the last thing I ever was thinking about. I was, I was busy working. And I got to thinking about it, and eventually I took them, took them up on that. And the, I remember Henry Minibu asked me into his office on my first day, and he sat me down, and he said, "You know, John, we're here to work. We're not here to sit back and relax, and this is not a place for the, for the..." Henry didn't use air quotes very often, but he did that day, and he said, "As a government employee or a government worker." And, and I can tell you that my family, my parents, my siblings, we held each other to a very high standard of work. If you weren't working, you weren't pulling your weight, and you needed to start pulling your weight. And so I was never afraid of hard work, never afraid of a challenge. In fact, challenges were accomplishments just waiting for you to overcome or achieve. And the, so I wasn't worried about Henry's admonition about working. And the, the other thing was, I thought I might only work for the county for maybe three years. And, well, that changed, because I sort of found my calling, if you will. That commitment to the public as a, as a public employee became a major thing for me. So this was kind of my home. And the team, and the teams that I've had around me throughout my career have just been tremendous, and they have made me look better than I really am. And together, we've achieved things which people didn't think we could do. I can't tell you how many projects people said we'll never do, and the Pineda Extension, the Parkway, there's many more. And the, so I'm proud that with the team that we had and the leadership that we had, that we were able to get so many good things done. The, sort of, one of the things that I was always about was having a vision and understanding what the vision was. And the ITS was an example of that. And I insisted we had a plan. We needed a plan, and we got it. And we started funding it and getting it funded, and, and so we've got it, we've got an excellent system that many in the state envy. And the, because of so much hard work by so many good people who knew more about it than I did, and, but that's an example of it. And so now, it's kind of come time for me to thank my family, my wife, my children, my grandchildren. They all inspire me to continue to work hard, to provide for them, and for them to provide for me, and the support and strength that they give me. I want to thank the county staff, all of them that have worked for me, many who have passed on. The, they're just tremendous people, and I can assure the public that they work a lot harder than the stereotypical government worker. And in fact, when they needed to put in extra time, they did, and when I asked them to, they did. And when we needed it, they did. And so I'm just couldn't be more proud and honored to work with such a group. I want to thank Frank. He trusted me to bring me up into the county manager's office, and, which I was completely surprised by, did not anticipate, wasn't expecting. And so he's not only trusted me, but he's had my back, he's stood shoulder to shoulder with me when I needed it, and, and we've achieved good things, and for the people of this county, of this community, and not just unincorporated residents, but all the residents of Brevard County. And so it's been an honor to serve and be allowed to serve, and I'm not coasting to the end. I've got a meeting on Friday morning with the City of Palm Bay. It's going to be an important event, and so we're going to keep working right to the end to meet the challenges that we have. I hope I've left everyone in good hands. I'm going to paraphrase great American Douglas Macarthur, and say it's time for me to, as an engineer, to fade away, and the, there'll be good people that take care of things in the future, and I have total confidence in that. So with that, thank you all very, very much.
We're going to take pictures, okay? We're going to take pictures. I think Don's going to get some pictures. Okay, Commissioners, we'll move on to consent agenda. Anything, anybody wants to take off of the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull F4.
Okay, we'll take F4 off. Anything else? No? All right. Let's give Kathy a second to come up here, and we'll go ahead and get to F4. Yeah, but I think I have F6, okay? Let's do F4, then I won't forget you, okay? Whenever you're ready, Kathy.
This is a request that the Board of County Commissioners approve the commissioned district appointments, reappointments. The Board approval of this item will acknowledge the district commissioners' appointments and reappointments and approved-at-large appointments.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Um, well, I guess not really a question.
Okay, we don't have any other cards on the issue. We don't have questions. Go ahead and discussion.
I just wanted to bring up a concern that I had about item number six. And my concern is about a possible conflict of interest. And, you know, I just, I don't feel comfortable with that, so I would like to talk about that.
You're going to have to tell us which, which ones you're talking about here.
Oh, okay. The appointment to the Board of Adjustments, Bruce Moya.
Is that the only one that you have?
Yes.
Problem with? Any other Commissioners have concerns since we've opened this item up on appointments? Think that we should vote on any others?
Now, are you telling me, Chair?
Yes, sir.
What is the issue with Bruce Moya? What's the issue?
Commissioner Delaney, can you answer that?
Sure. My concern is that as a professional engineer, that he could, there could be times where he could financially benefit from the decisions made on this board, and so that is troubling to me.
Wouldn't you say that you could pull that card on about anybody we appoint?
Um, I don't know if I would agree with that.
Well, would you agree that regardless of he's a, is there any other professional people you don't want to be appointed, like maybe an attorney? Because Bruce is an engineer, so a builder? Is there anybody else we need to kind of, due to the fact they could be politically challenged or something? Is there anybody else you don't like?
It's, it's not a personal thing. Like I said, it's, I'm just concerned about a possible conflict of interest.
Well, Chair?
Sir?
Wouldn't there be a need to address that if there was one, but right now, there is none?
Okay, let's, I think, I think there's a tie here. How do, how do we want to handle this? Do we want to vote on every one of these? Do you want to vote on the one in question? How do we, what's the pleasure of the board? How do we want to do these today?
I'm fine with, if, if the Board is okay with it, I'm fine on approving all the others.
You just want to vote, you just want to register a no vote on, on that one? On Bruce Moya?
Um, I'm okay with that, as long as, you know, I don't know if any of the other Commissioners have a concern. So I don't know if we want to pull that one first, for a vote on its own, or if we just want to do a registered no vote.
Okay, I'm seeking the pleasure of the board here. Anyone else?
Chair, I would move that we vote, vote on them all, and she can register a no vote.
I second that.
On the whole lot?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. We have a motion. Okay. Is that it for consent? Okay. We'll, we'll just, we'll just do all of consent. Commissioner Delaney, you can register a no vote. Is that what you want to do? On Bruce Moya?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so the clerk will record that. No vote for her. On the rest of consent, sir, is that your motion? The rest of consent? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Goodson for consent. We have a second by Commissioner Atkinson. Clerk will call the roll. Mr. Chair? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, wait a minute. Since we're doing the rest of consent, I'm sorry. Thank you. You're on it, I think. Yeah, I, Sandra? Sorry.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So I want to talk about the item to do with the golf carts and amending the areas in Vieira. I've met with you about...
So what we see is an uprising in the number of golf cart accidents. This was a couple days ago. I'm going to suggest there's liability for the county in failing to address and follow the law. You have signs, I've taken pictures of them, that are greater than 35 miles an hour while you have golf cart crossings, which is a violation of state law. In addition, we had some legislative changes recently. This is 2023, and this says prohibiting a person under 18 years of age of operating a golf cart on certain roadways unless he possesses a learner's permit or a driver's license. I went by Vieira High School, there's plenty of golf carts there. While I was standing there, went in there and got their form, and they do not check that they have a driver's license when I picked up the form. While I was there, boom, crash! And I look over at the golf carts, and a kid slammed into the tunnel. Fortunately, they weren't injured, but, you know, you've got to do a better job on this and start following the law. LSVs have to be licensed and plated, and there are clearly lots of LSVs driving around in Vieira pretending to be golf carts, and you need some education. I've asked you guys to go TPO and get some education for the public and for you guys to follow the law.
Chair, may I?
Thank you. This is my item, commissioners. I'll speak to it to a second. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. I'd like to call Lisa Cullen up here to ask her some questions. May I?
If she's so amenable. I see her coming up here. So it looks like it.
Thank you, madam.
You're welcome.
Question, ma'am. What you just heard referred a lot to state law. Was that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? So therefore, does the county have the liability by not mandating something that the state would not approve or could approve? I don't know. I'm asking.
I would be able to answer questions about titling and registering a low-speed vehicle versus a golf cart.
Okay.
But not your liability.
I understand.
That might be, Mr. Richardson.
That being said, tell me on licensing a low-speed or a golf cart. Tell me what state law.
Well, I haven't revisited that lately, but a low-speed vehicle has the safety equipment on it that a golf cart would not have, so they can be used on the roadways, and they are licensed with a license plate.
Is it true, then, if you buy, for example, a Roxar? Do you know what a Roxar is? It's made in India, it's a Jeep.
No, sir, I do not.
Okay, so it's got, it's got lights, it's got turn signals, it's got brake lights, it's got flashing lights, warning lights, but yet I don't think it qualifies to be tagged.
I would have to see the manufacturer's certificate of origin. That would go through NHTSA and ANVA and different associations that we deal with that would determine if that vehicle is street legal or not.
So I think what you're saying...
A certificate of origin will tell me, a manufacturer's certificate of origin will tell me whether a vehicle is street legal as being a low-speed vehicle or being a golf cart.
Can you make a golf cart street legal?
Yes, but then you have to have it inspected.
And your office inspects?
Actually, the DHS and the inspectors inspect them.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chair.
While you're there, Lisa.
I don't know if I know any more now than I did before.
I'm sorry. Is there anyone else who has a question on this for the tax collector, since she's gracious enough to be here? No? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Commissioners, this is my item. It's not Vieira. We're not trying to expand anything. I don't want to, especially over on the beach. I'm sensitive to that. But in Suntry specifically, if you know Suntry, the Springs of Suntry are outside of what was allowed. So basically, members who, members of the country club cannot take their golf cart from Springs of Suntry, but their neighbors can. And that's what this was trying to fix, so that's it. Any questions on that? All right, I think we already, now, did we vote on consent? I forgot. Were we needing to do that? Okay, all right. Clerk will, I think we had a motion and a second. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
I'd like to put for the record, yes, on the consent except for F4, item number six.
Okay. Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goodson?
Yes.
Chair Felton?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, commissioners. We will go on to, go on to the G comments. Sandra?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So the way that this was presented in the last meeting, so what this is, is authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to approve a budget supplement, basically moving the money that came, the money not spent from the clerk of courts and the property priser's office, and having that money go to some parks issue from Hurricane Milton. And what was represented in the last meeting was this was a kind of a temporary movement in the sense that once your insurance and FEMA paid for these expenses, that it would be reimbursed. Unfortunately, that statement and the way this was presented in the last meeting is not represented in the resolution. It's simply a budget change for roughly $2.3 million, with nothing about it being returned when those issues are addressed by insurance. I'd like to, you know, kind of know when the insurance is going to do this. It seems like a lot of these items on the list have to do with shoreline erosion. You know, I don't know. We, on beachside, where we're pretty well affected, but, you know, we didn't really have that much damage from Milton. So I'm at a little loss. One, two, three, four, five, at least five of them are shoreline erosion. Does insurance even cover that? I mean, I just, you know, how much have you already applied to FEMA? And do you have an intention in reality for this money to go back to the general budget as was represented in the last meeting? And how much do you expect that to be? Because I'd like to see that money go to FIRE. That is a critical need. That's way more critical than this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't think we have any other cards on the first public comment. I see Commander making his way over. Okay, Mark, you're recognized, sir. Run H1.
Good morning, commissioners. H1's a petition to vacate a right-of-way at Westways Drive. It's the McAdam subdivision, and requesting a vacate of a 50-foot public right-of-way, and we will receive back a roadway drainage and utilities. We've received no formal objections.
I do have two cards on this. Are there questions from the board first for Mark? And Mr. Ramos, if you want to speak, we're going to need you to put in a card, but we'll take that up in a minute. Marjorie Hartman? And then after that, Ian Mark? Okay. Recognize, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm on Tall Pine Road that backs up to that property on the side, and I'm not sure why we're putting a trailer in, whether there's a change in zoning that would allow a trailer to have this right-of-way put in. And that's my main concern. I really don't want a change in zoning that allows trailers and then more trailers to come in. And that's the question here today, that I'm looking at this right-of-way, and why all of a sudden there's trailers behind me.
Okay. We'll see if we can answer that for you here in a minute.
Okay. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And Mark?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Ian Mark from 1861 Tall Pine. That abuts the pond in the back. I guess it's called the Wayside Development. To put, in order to put a road in here, I was looking at the map, and I didn't see that it was clear that to have a throughway that would only, it wasn't clear where the throughway would start or end, and that was my concern because it is a tight area with residential all around it, and also a lot of children, and I'd be concerned about that. And that's my main concern.
Okay, ma'am. I think we have one of your other neighbors here. I think he'll be able to explain it, what he's trying to do. Okay?
Thank you.
Marty, willing to speak to us here for a moment? Tell us what you're trying to do, sir.
I would love to.
And you'll do a card for us afterward, okay? With Melissa in the back. Thank you.
Please, ma'am?
No, no, just talk here. You're talking to the board.
My name is Mark Ramos. I serve in the Marine Corps for 21 years, and proudly I've served. I bought this property when everything was a water lot, to include Westway Street. I built a nice house. The VA helped me, the Marine Corps helped me. I served Vietnam during 1967, 1968. I lost my friends. I was the only one that made it home. Thank God. And all I'm asking is, my final years, I'm 76 years old, to be able to park my motorhome in there so I could do some traveling the rest of my days. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions from Mr. Ramos? Anyone else? Yeah, I think I understand that in front of his property there, he's looking for his own motorhome, not a mobile home that people are going to reside in. Does that answer things?
Is there a fence around it?
Marty, is there going to be a fence by it? Sir?
I have a hearing in permanent, ma'am.
If, you're speaking to the board here. Just answer that question for us real quick, sir, if you would. I'm sorry. Will there be a fence in front of your mobile home?
No, no fence.
You have some trees there, though, right?
It's a lot of trees back there.
Okay, all right. Okay. Commissioners, I'm comfortable with what he's trying to do here, so it's my district. Is there, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Delaney, there's a second by Commissioner Goodson. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goodson?
Yes.
Chairman Felton?
Yes. Congratulations, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, we will go to H2. Jill, you're recognized.
Good morning, commissioners. This public hearing is in accordance with board direction received on January 14th, and this budget supplement will recognize unanticipated balance forward and allocate those dollars to repair parks facilities, the damages that were caused from Hurricane Milton.
Okay, commissioners, questions for Jill?
Question.
Commissioner Goodson?
Tell me, how long does it only take for your money? I think Frank answered it last meeting from the federal government, FEMA.
It can take, it's a very lengthy process. It could take anywhere between five to seven years. Sometimes it's a little less than that, but the FEMA public assistance process, it is a reimbursement model, so we have to show that we've completed the project, we have to provide a lot of documentation, so that can take time.
Thank you.
There's multiple reviews involved as well.
Commissioner Atkinson?
When we do get those reimbursements, where will that money go back to?
We work closely with county finance to make sure that any funds reimbursed go to where the funds were paid from, so that would be the general fund in this case.
Thank you.
Commissioner Delaney?
Would you, would you mind explaining that process a little bit for, for the public about, like, how it's possible that we may not get reimbursed for this, but we're going to go through the process and do everything we can to try to get reimbursed? But will you kind of expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, it is a very lengthy process. So the first thing that happens is there's a disaster recovery scoping meeting that we have with FEMA. We work really closely with the departments and with staff to document everything. We put together detailed damage inventory, and then FEMA schedules site inspections, so they go out and visit all of the damages and make sure they're documented. We then file insurance claims with our property insurance. Some things are covered, some things aren't. For example, shoreline damages, those wouldn't be something covered by property insurance, and then FEMA will only cover those things not covered by property insurance. So it's, it goes through a federal review, it also goes through a review at the state level as well.
And have we started the process with FEMA?
Yes, we have. We have.
Awesome. Thank you.
We have one card on this. Any other questions for Jill before we go to the cards? Sir?
Could you, if you know, could you explain to me or the board the FEMA's response on the bridge on Merritt Island? And when did you, that was what, seven years ago, something? Frank, or, yeah?
John's very familiar with that because he was involved in the initial submission, so let him address it.
Yeah, the damage to the bridge occurred in 2017. I think it was Hurricane Irma, and we immediately were seeking assistance through the Corps of Engineers, the Florida DOT, and obviously FEMA. And after a great deal of effort, we're finally got a commitment of some assistance from FEMA. We haven't received the money yet, but we will be receiving that, we expect probably in the next year to year and a half.
Chair, one more question to John?
Yes, sir, for a question.
Then could you tell me cost of the bridge and what you think you'll get from FEMA?
I don't recall the exact numbers at this point. Mark, do you know what they are?
Commissioner, I don't have the exact number, but I think it was around one or 1.3 million or somewhere in that ballpark. But as John explained, we've been working diligently since 2017 to recover funds, and that is a fraction of what it will cost us to rebuild the bridge.
Commissioners, I want to make sure you understood that that was just what we're going to get from FEMA. The actual cost of the bridge is quite a bit more.
I think, I think the bridge is around 25. I ain't sure, but anyway, thank you. Thank you both.
Yes, sir. Mark, hold on one second. Commissioner Atkinson?
Just one further question. I don't know who's the right person to answer it, but just to confirm, these are not reoccurring funds that we can count on.
That's correct.
Thank you. And after a great deal of effort, we're finally got a commitment of some assistance from FEMA. We haven't received the money yet, but we will be receiving that, we expect probably in the next year to year and a half.
Chair, one more question to John?
Yes, sir. For a question.
Then could you tell me cost of the bridge and what you think you'll get from FEMA?
I don't recall the exact numbers at this point. Mark, do you know what they are?
Commissioner, I don't have the exact number, but I think it was around one or 1.3 million or somewhere in that ballpark. But as John explained, we've been working diligently since 2017 to recover funds, and that is a fraction of what it will cost us to rebuild the bridge.
Commissioners, I want to make sure you understood that that was just what we're going to get from FEMA. The actual cost of the bridge is quite a bit more.
I think, I think the bridge is around 25. I ain't sure. But anyway, thank you. Thank you both.
Yes, sir. Mark, hold on one second. Commissioner Atkinson.
Just one further question. I don't know who's the right person to answer it, but just to confirm, these are not reoccurring funds that we can count on.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Done with questions. Sandra Sullivan. On H2? Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Discussion on the item. Commissioners? No? Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Goodson. We have a second by Commissioner Delaney. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goodson?
Yes.
Chairman Felton?
Yes. Commissioners, we'll show that passes 5-0. Okay. We're going to move into I1. See Peter.
Morning, Commissioners. I1 is the marketing support program coming back. There are three requested actions of the board. The first one is to provide direction on the 44 events that were being recommended by the Tourist Development Council.
Okay. Let's sort of do these in pieces then. Questions for Peter on that, that item? Is, okay. Question?
I just kind of wanted to clarify that we have a group of people who, in good faith, went through the process, expected to be reimbursed for their expenses. Is that correct? And they met the criteria that we requested?
Yes, ma'am. The application process opened in October and they, there are some events that have already occurred, but they, they did apply in good faith.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Have three cards. Martha? Good morning. You recognize them?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Martha Passaro from 1280 Marshall Court in Merritt Island. I'm representing the Native Heritage Gathering Incorporated on behalf of the cultural community here in Brevard County with a eye on this program being one of the community support issues that we have an ordinance on and a vote for expenditure of tax dollars coming back to the community cultural grants. And I was very much thankful for being a part of the workshop that was held to hear Commissioner Thad Altman talk about the origins of this particular program. And I would like to see, on behalf of the cultural community, a return to that sort of common sense that's inclusive of all of the organizations and certainly to make sure that we fund the ones that have already gone through process and have committed to their programs and need that reimbursement. But we would also like to see some involvement with the ones that were knocked out by the requirement for the 5,001 attendance from out of county. That's a really arbitrary number on my estimation, based on what we've had to accomplish in the past. And that rubric for coming up with that many out of county attendees was, it was iffy, if anything, for us to understand why that was the new cap on qualifying for this grant. And we thank you for going forward and working hard on bringing back the programs that are inclusive for all of our cultural communities. It serves everyone, including our constituents and the wonderful, wonderful people who come to visit Brevard County. And I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Martha.
Thank you.
George Trossit? Yes. Sorry. Should've said that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm George Trossit, and I am a Surfing Santa. If you'd have told me 16 years ago that Surfing Santas would become what it has become, a family-friendly, community event, loved by thousands, I'd have told you, ain't no way. But over the years, Space Ghost Officer Tourism has been very kind to us, the county commission, of course, supporting them. And we've been able to put on what I like to call the greatest show on surf. Surfing Santas, it costs us about $30,000 these days to put on the event, between the stage and website and the things we do, the insurance, all these things. And I'd say that that $30,000 expense is probably one of the best investments that the county could make. We have reached this crazy media success over the years, billions of media impressions. Like last year, we had 2.1 billion media impressions from our goofy little Surfing Santa event, meaning 2.1 billion times somebody, somewhere saw something about Surfing Santas. And it was over a 42-hour period, which amazes me. If you do the math, our Surfing Santa event this year created 50 million impressions per hour for the first 42 hours when the, when the report was run that came up with the 2.1 billion impressions. So, people all over the world, all over the country, all over the state are seeing things about Surfing Santas. So, for a small investment, $30,000, we're returning some $20 million value in advertising value to the county. I want to see the cultural grants go back to the old way where we spend money on the event and then get reimbursed through the county, through the Office of Tourism. So, basically, we support the old program if, if that's a possibility. I'd also like to introduce Space Surfing Santa. This guy's cousin went to space on August, in August of '22 on a Blue Origin flight. He was stuffed in a suitcase, and I never got to see him floating in space, and that's what I want to see. So, if any of you have any connections to SpaceX or Blue Origin, and we can get this guy in a capsule and get him floating in space, it'd make me happy and we can make a pretty good media hit over that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Angela Johnson.
Good morning. I'm Angela Johnson, General Manager of Coconuts on the Beach. I think most of you know where Surfing Santas has been held the last 11 years, besides COVID, and we're very proud of that. I myself, a background, I grew up in Cocoa Beach, graduated from Cocoa Beach High School, and have worked at Coconuts since 1999. So, to say my heart and soul isn't in downtown Cocoa Beach is an understatement, and being supportive of Surfing Santas is huge. Our staff looks forward to the event every year. We're proud of it. We really went on the map as far as downtown Cocoa Beach, Cocoa Beach in general, because of Surfing Santas. I do believe that, and we're really proud of it. But, as we know, every year, expenses raise. Every year, we get quotes on how much this is going to cost, that's going to cost, everywhere. But the event is expensive, and we're asking for a little support. We support Surfing Santas. We are a huge sponsor. But our pockets are only so deep, okay? So, I'm just asking for, as George did, to get a little, to go backwards in how the money is spent for the, that event in itself and overall the Tourism Council. So, if you guys could reconsider that, it would be much appreciated from us at Coconuts as well as all of downtown Cocoa Beach. Kenny Wells is Cocoa Beach Main Street. You guys may know her. We actually sit and look at some of these events. We have a cookie crawl that goes on and a tree lighting, which is well Coconut sponsors. And we say, these are hallmark moments. You know, this is our small, little beach town that is a hallmark moment, and we're very proud of that. But we do ask for more support, and we appreciate you considering it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, that's, that's it for the cards. Now, Peter, remind me, we're back on the, the pre-approved?
Yeah, Action 1, sir, is to provide direction on the applications that were already received, the 44 events that the TDC is recommending.
And that totals, tell me that total again?
$805,000.
Okay. Just so the commission's clear on that. All right, Commissioners, I think we already asked questions on that. Is there any, or is there any comment on the $805,000 for those prior events?
I, I have a question.
Okay. Sorry. Yes.
Is, is there any way that we could approve the change of how the money's spent? That we can allow these organizations to spend the money how they need?
That's the third motion, Commissioner.
That's the third one? Okay.
Yeah. Sorry. I'm trying to keep them in pieces too. Okay. All right. Any other discussion on, on that? Commissioner Atkinson?
I was just going to move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Atkinson.
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Delaney. Clerk will call the roll.
Hold on.
Sir?
Hold on. We're voting on one? Is that correct? Option one?
Peter, just say it one more time. We're voting on the?
Oh, okay.
The $805,000 that the prior board saved for this board to approve.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Yes, sir. Okay.
All right.
We had, I believe, Commissioner Atkinson made the motion. We have a second by Commissioner Delaney. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goodson?
Yes.
Chair Felton?
Yes. We'll show that part passes 5-0. Okay. Now, Peter, what's, what's the next part?
Okay. So, sir, the next part is to address the potential adding of $100,000 for some of the smaller events. There were three options under that, under that. The first option is for each district commissioner to allocate $20,000 to the event of their choice. The second option is to just do a distribution of the $100,000 across the 11 smaller events. And then the third is to use the previous year's criteria across the 11 smaller events, which comes out to a prorated amount for each totaling $100,000.
Hey, Commissioners, questions on how this is going to work? Commissioner Atkinson?
I do have one question. So, our third option, which is to approve the use of the previous year's criteria, my question is, to include the organizations that did not qualify and therefore did not apply? Who is that alluding to?
So, there's 11 events listed on Attachment B. I can read them off if, if you'd like, but there's 11, and so?
I'm, I'm sorry. I specifically mean the one who, the ones that did not even apply.
None of those 11 applied as a result of them not qualifying.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else in questions for Peter on this issue? What's the, what's the, what's the thought process here in discussion? What do we want to do with the $100,000? You want to give the $100,000 back to TDC? You want to support some of these events?
Mr. Truman?
You want to save it for lifeguards next year? No? Mr. Commissioner?
So, one option is each commissioner, we divide it up by five different districts. And so, I provided the two projects I would support, and the reason I picked those two projects, they stood out, they were unique, they dealt with conservation, preservation, and historic restoration, and ecohistoric tourism. And I didn't see a whole lot in the budget for that personally. That's probably my favorite type of tourism, so I put those two projects in Field Meadow and Green Gables. So, if we were to take that approach, that's, those are the two items that I've selected. Although I think what that requires is the commission to vote on that. Doesn't, doesn't?
And, and we could do, we could vote for the whole thing, or we could, you know, take up each district's items and, and vote. We could do that too. I appreciate that you picked one out of your district.
Yeah, I did. I looked at conservation, historic preservation.
I'm thinking.
Well, I didn't even know that.
I think.
I had no idea.
We, we?
No, I didn't know that.
Okay. I think we all, we all go there for a nice lunch too. So, it's a historical house, and it's, it's an amazing property. Okay. All right. But we had, we had two districts that didn't, didn't put anything. So, let's, let's go to that. Commissioner Delaney, what's, what's your thought here?
Sure. So, I had a question. Are we, is it possible to give, if we did decide to break it up for 20,000 each, is it possible to give organizations that already received money, extra money?
Peter?
Yeah. Whatever the board's pleasure, I don't see an issue.
Yeah, those are unallocated funds, so it would be available by board vote for what be decided.
And I really appreciated Commissioner Felton's suggestion of possibly saving this money for lifeguards. I don't, we haven't really talked about that at all, so that?
That day's ahead of us.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's, that's an option, Commissioners, so we could just take that money and just leave it in the fund and give us a little room in the summer when that debate comes back up. Is that a possibility? Okay. It sounds like there's one for that, maybe possibly two. Commissioner Altman, sir?
I, I would not be for using tourist tax dollars for lifeguards.
Okay.
I, I think we should do that out of our general fund.
Okay. Got a lot of things coming out of the general fund this year. Commissioner Goodson, sir? What's your opinion on that?
I have another one, number two. I'm more on number three.
Okay. How do we want, what do we want to do about the $100,000 that we have in front of us? Do you want to save that in a fund for lifeguard discussion later, or do you want to appropriate $20,000 for items possibly in your district?
Can we give it back to the TDC to decide what to do with it?
We could just leave it in the TDC. Do you want to do that, Commissioner Goodson?
No.
Okay.
Nope. Nope.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to use this money for the lifeguards.
May I make a comment?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. If you know anything about lifeguards, you couldn't even get Cocoa Beach to agree to pay their full share. So, now you're going to give money back to lifeguards that's going to put Cocoa Beach right in front of you, saying, okay, you have the money, pay for the whole thing. That's my comment.
End of debate. I think Commissioner Delaney had the light before you, sir. Commissioner Delaney?
Honestly, I'm, I'm, that's a fight for a different day. At the end of the day, I feel like public safety, we have to, I mean, that's our number one job, is to make sure that we have safe communities, safe beaches, and if we have this money, we might as well save it for, for that.
Commissioner Altman?
The reason I don't think we should use tourist development tax dollars for lifeguards is the fact that if we were to make that a policy statement, we could just clean out the entire TDC budget, because lifeguard expense is quite high. $100,000 is not going to pay many lifeguards. So, I think that when we do spend the money from the tourist development tax revenue, it should be spent in a way that has an impact on the original intent of the statute that created the tourist development tax, paid for by hoteliers. We, we had an original referendum that brought everyone together, and they built a compromise and passed the tax. Took, what, three times to pass it? Twice it didn't.
Twice it didn't. So, I think a big public safety issue like lifeguards, we should ante up. That's a public safety, a very important public safety policy decision that we need to make and fund it through general fund. And whatever it takes to work out, whatever agreement we need to have with the cities, we need to roll our sleeves up and make that happen. So, that's my opinion. Thought I would voice that.
Okay, sir. Commissioner Atkinson, is that a light? Or did you want to say? Okay. Here's, here's what we can do. We could-
I have a light.
I didn't see it, but, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. As far as public safety, we do pay for our lifeguards on our beach. Cocoa Beach, Satellite Beach, those beaches said they couldn't afford it, didn't want any part of it, didn't care, didn't even want tourists. So, make sure you understand, Brevard County pays for their lifeguards on their beaches.
Chair, would you mind if I?
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that, but I, I feel like, you know, I was, I was watching during that time, and it was, the heat was up. And so, I wonder if, you know, they may have a different tone, depending upon how we move forward and how we, you know, build relationships with our cities. So, I would hate for things that happened last year to muddy up the great relationships we could have with our cities moving forward.
Commissioner, I will agree with you that maybe a renewed effort this year, hopefully we could get a better product in partnership with the municipalities. Not for nothing, the money that comes out of ocean rescue is part of fire rescue. So, anything that we can do to help there is meaningful. So, we could just today say, "Let's leave the hundred thousand in TDC," and we could deal with this another day, maybe when we're a little bit further down the road, and have better information. That may be the safe course. What's the, what's the pleasure of the board? We got to decide something here.
I'm okay with that.
All right. Commissioner Delaney, is that a motion? Leave it in the TDC?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Atkinson, is that a second? Commissioner Atkinson seconds that. We're going to leave the hundred thousand in the TDC for now. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
No.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goodson?
No.
Chairman Felton?
Yes.
We'll show that passes three-two. Thanks for all the input. All right. Let's go to-
And then, option-
I'm sorry.
Option three, sir, is just seeking direction on the use of the funds. There's two choices. One is just leave the current method as defined in the marketing support program criteria, where the Tourism Development Office would do the marketing. Or, number two, allow applicants to choose between marketing support provided by the Tourism Development Office, or they could get direct reimbursements for allowable expenses.
Questions for Peter on this item. Peter, I heard from the, I mean, I think in the workshop, which in my mind was productive, hearing from everyone that, you know, there's a differing opinion on that. I heard, I think, an equal number of people say that they appreciate that the TDC does the marketing on their behalf, because they're not marketing professionals, you know, they're event professionals. But then also heard people say that we, you know, it's not the marketing so much, we're trying to deal with things like the cost of providing day-of-event police and traffic control and those sorts of things. So, I'm sympathetic to that. It would be my preference that probably number two would be a good, would be a good fit. Do you think that works for the TDC just as well?
We can make that work, absolutely, sir.
I think the one thing nice about the TDC, let me just say this, that, you know, there should be economies of scale, right? When you're, when you're doing these things, they're doing a lot of marketing for events, and so, they know the things that work well, the things that don't work well, where they've gotten good return on money. So, I would encourage all these groups to take the TDC up on that. But commissioners, would there be a motion for the second option?
Please move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkinson for option number two, the hybrid option, and we have a second by Commissioner Delaney. Clerk will call the roll.
Before we do, I have just a clarification. So, this is to allow applicants to choose between marketing support provided by the Tourism Development Office or direct reimbursement. So, they have that choice.
Yes, sir.
They can pick that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Sorry, that wasn't clear.
That's okay.
Okay, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goodson?
Yes.
Chairman Felton?
Yes. We'll show that passes five-zero.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Peter, good job. And Commissioner, is this, is your-
You want to introduce this item?
Sure.
Okay, all right, you're recognized.
Thank you. So, I wanted to bring forward the idea of having all of your participation in a Speak Up Brevard workshop. Right now, when I checked last night, there are forty-six submissions to this. And one of the things that is very important to me is trying to get the public back engaged in our government, and this program showcases that. And the more that we can bring the public in and give them a sense of ownership of the decisions and choices that are made in this building, I think the better. I think it's going to help with our public trust issues. I think it's going to help, you know, bring the community back together. And, you know, that's something that I'm very passionate about. And so, I have the dates on here for February eighteenth or February twenty-seventh at five o'clock. And I was hoping to get some support on this public engagement workshop.
Other questions of the sponsor?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson, for a question.
Is it true that the staff has a hundred and twenty days to review these?
Yes.
Okay. Will staff be ready by February the eighteenth if they have a hundred and twenty days?
With, my intention for this is not necessarily to get the staff's recommendation. It's more so to give us the, a fuller, better understanding from the people who are doing the proposing of their item. And then, that way, too, I feel like the staff can get a fuller understanding as well while they're making their recommendations.
Help me understand, is it true that these people come before the board, they plead their case, staff reviews it, and then says, "Well, it's, in Policy 103, it's already being performed." So, what better understanding could we have, other than staff researches them, study them, and telling us about them?
Maybe there's, even if something is already going on within our, within our policies, it could bring something else to light that maybe isn't quite working well, or it could be expanded or restricted. There's, like I said, this is, this is about engaging the public and getting more public input to what we're doing.
Do your constituents come to your office and complain about issues?
Complain and, you know, have great suggestions, all of that, yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah. Why don't you have a town hall meeting with your constituents and then bring back your findings to the board?
I would, I talk to my constituents on a regular basis, you know, and I have town halls that, you know, I'm working on scheduling. But this program and this workshop really was inspired by you, Commissioner Goodson, last year when you, you know, proposed this.
I really didn't know I was going to be inspired to have numerous town halls every time you turn around for issues that our county staff should work on and come back to us. But that's okay.
I have a question.
Commissioner Atkinson for a question.
Mr. Delaney, do you expect that all of the people, all the applicants, will be bringing everything before us? Are we going to give staff a chance to, like, weed out some of the things we just don't have any control over?
At this point, I'm open to that suggestion of weeding out the things that, that we have no control over. And, yeah, so I'm definitely open to that.
Any other questions for the sponsor? I don't think we have cards. Those are on J. How, how, how long do you think a workshop? I mean, I think it helps commissioners to have a time-certain kind of situation when you're talking about a workshop.
Sure. We could, I think our, our standard workshops are about usually two to three hours. So, I'm, I'm fine, like I said, this is, I'm pretty open to what the rest of the board is willing to do, even if this is kind of a trial run, to see if this is something we'd like to continue doing every year.
Okay, so you would propose possibly a three-hour workshop on this issue?
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Altman, sir?
What type of day, what time of day are you proposing?
I originally suggested five o'clock. That way, people can be off of work and whatnot. But if, you know, I'm, like I said, I'm open to that, to changing that time, really whatever makes this work for, for the board.
Well, I would prefer evening.
Okay.
And that would make it more available by the public, to the working public.
For sure.
Commissioner, would you consider taking the list, paring it down, and then coming back to the next commission meeting, giving the lists of items, so that commissioners could sort of make a more informed decision on this?
Sure.
Are you open to that? Are there any other thoughts on that? Okay, I think you could get it, I think we're getting somewhere. Okay? Okay, all right. Let's, you're going to, you're going to bring that back to another, and it also closes, right? In a few days?
Yes, on the thirty-first.
I understand. Thirty-first. So, you'll have an idea what the total is. Okay.
Thank you, board.
All right. Okay, very good. All right. Good job on that one. Okay. We're going to go on to J-one, and we don't, okay, Virginia, you have to explain this to us, what we're going to do today.
This is appointments to the Save Our New River Lagoon Citizen Oversight Committee, sort of like the tourism item that went before this. It's a multi-step requested action, three-step requested action. So, the first is to consider confirming the appointments of applicants selected by the League of Cities. The second request is to rank the remaining candidates for filling the board's vacancies. Read those selections aloud for the public record. I will tally them and bring them back to the chair while you proceed with your agenda. And then, later in this meeting, you can consider those tallied rankings and appointment, consider appointment of the top-ranked candidates.
I'll tell you what, before we get into this, how about we take a five-minute break? And we'll, we'll just sort of start that again, because this might take a little bit of time in the next one, okay? Five minutes, everybody, thank you.
So we'll do roll call, Kim if you're just, Nicole if you'll call the roll. And just announce your one, two, and three. So, right?
Each category.
For each, for each category, right? Okay, Nicole?
Commissioner Delaney.
For the science, I have Mark Shrop, Aaron Adams, and Frederick Goldstein. For technology, I have Sandra Sullivan, Richard Nipper, and Gary, I'm so sorry Gary, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. And then for tourism, since there's only one choice, it, it's Laura Lee Thompson. And for lagoon commerce, Steve Justice, and then Aaron Adams. For economics and finance, Steve Justice, Bruce Larson, Carol Spellman. And then for lagoon education outreach advocacy, number one is Stell Bailey, two is Sandra Sullivan, and three is Nicholas Sanzon, or no, I'm sorry, Bruce Larson. My eyes crossed on that one.
Commissioner Altman.
Science, Donald Deese, Richard Nipper, Mark Shrop. Did I say that right?
I think so.
For technology, Donald Deese, Richard Nipper, and Mark Shrop. Tourism, Laura Lee Thompson. Lagoon commerce, Aaron Adams, Steve Justice. Economics, Frederick Goldstein, Bruce Larson, Carol Spellman. Do I need to give the numeric ranks on that, or just the names?
I, I think they assume that they were one, two, and three.
Oh, I need to go back, these are not necessary that way. Let me go back over that again.
Is that right?
All right. I, I need to, because they're not necessary.
Okay.
Donald Deese, number one, for science, number two, Richard Nipper, number three, Mark Shrop. For technology, number one is Richard Nipper, number two is Donald Deese, number three is Mark Shrop. Laura Lee Thompson, number one. For tourism, lagoon committee, number one, Aaron Adams, number two, Steve Justice. For economics, number one is Frederick Goldstein, number two is Bruce, is Carol Spellman, and number three is Bruce Larson. For lagoon education, number one is Deborah Harmon, number two is Frederick Goldstein, number three is Stell Bailey.
Commissioner Atkinson.
For science, number one is Donald Deese, number two is Richard Nipper, number three is Mark Shrop. Technology, number one, Donald Deese, number two, Richard Nipper, number three, Mark Shrop. Tourism, Laura Lee Thompson. Lagoon commerce, number one, Aaron Adams, number two, Steve Justice. Economics and finance, number one, Carol Spellman, number two, Frederick Goldstein, number three, Bruce Larson. Lagoon education and outreach, number one, Frederick Goldstein, number two, Deborah Harmon, and number three, Stell Bailey.
Vice Chair Goodson.
Science, number one is Donald Deese, number two is Richard Nipper, number three is Mark Shrop. Technology, number one is Gary Agogan, I'm not sure, Richard Nipper, and Donald Deese. Tourism is number one, Laura Lee Thompson. Lagoon commerce, number one, Aaron Adams, number two, Steve Justice. Economic finance, number one, Frederick Goldstein, number two, Carol Spellman, number three, Bruce Larson. Lagoon education, number one, Deborah Harmon, number two, Frederick Goldstein, number three, Aaron Adams.
Chair Felton.
For science, number one, Donald Deese, number two, Richard Nipper, number three, Mark Shrop. For technology, number one, Richard Nipper, number two, Mark Shrop, number three, Bruce Larson. Laura Lee for tourism. Lagoon commerce, Aaron Adams, number one, Steve Justice, number two. For economics, finance, number one, Frederick Goldstein, number two, Steve Justice, and number three, Bruce Larson. And for lagoon education outreach, number one, Stell Bailey, number two, Frederick Goldstein, and number three, Deborah Harmon. I guess we could, yeah, I guess we could turn these in. Is that what we need to do, Virginia?
Yes, either turn them into me and I'll come down there to the clerk. I just want to check that I wrote them all down correctly, and then I'll tally them. So you can turn them into me or turn them into the clerk, either way, they'll end up with the clerk.
I'm just going to sit here and collect them.
Okay, Kim's going to bring those to you. Okay, so that's, we'll pause on J1, we'll come back to that, right?
Yep.
We'll go on to J2. All right. We do have a couple cards on this, or a few cards on this, but we will start with Eddie and then questions, okay? Go ahead, sir.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. So item J2, this is a seeking board direction with regard to the request from Space Florida to connect to the Sykes Creek wastewater collection treatment plants system. Just to do a little recap, we presented to the board at the December 3 meeting to kind of update the board about the request of Space Florida, their dynamic, and their request on how they were seeking a partnership with Brevard County on utilizing the collection system in Sykes Creek. Soon after, which we shared at the December 3 meeting, we met with delegation at Space Florida on December 9th that included Space Florida, Brevard County, EDC, and state secretaries from the state of Florida. And we discussed at length about ways we could make this work. That was concluded in essence of, you know, what, what would it take to make this work? And in your agenda packet, you'll even see a letter dated January 10th from Space Florida saying, you know, you know, let's, you know, what would, what could this, you know, what would it take? Now, typically, to go through a finite number, it takes like months of analysis, but we've used estimation, and obviously, looking at it from a conceptual side, we've come up with what we feel is an adequate number, which is the 130 million that we're seeking from Space Florida to do the improvements needed at the Sykes plant, in addition to some outlined conditions that we would, that we're sharing with Space Florida. So for discussion purpose, we're seeking direction from the board, and obviously, it's a question of, you know, whether we continue or not in our dialogue with Space Florida. And lastly, let me say we have representatives from Space Florida here if there's any questions.
Let me add a couple of things. This letter was drafted because Space Florida wanted an estimate from the county staff of what it would take to expand the Sykes Creek facility. If we only looked at an expansion of the facility, we told them that, you know, we would need more time to do that. They needed it because of their timetable. And so, the due diligence that Eddie mentioned, this is the best estimate that we could commit, come up with in this short period of time. If the, and when I was, when I helped draft this letter, made the decision that before we even send a letter to Space Florida, it needed to come back to the board, just because of the sensitive nature of what was involved in all this, and in light of the prior discussions that the board had when we discussed this back in December. There's going to, if in fact, this letter goes out, and that's what we're looking for, the board's approval, so that we could honor that commitment that they asked for to give them some estimate of what it would be. That's not a firm number. That is not a number that, there's a variety of contractual issues that would have to be looked at. We've discussed it with the board, we put it in prior correspondence, things about making sure that all our ratepayers, the board's ratepayers in the utility system are not going to be impacted negatively in terms of their rates because of the addition of Space Florida, that the type of waste that comes had to be residential type, couldn't be the industrial waste then, that we would have very aggressive monitoring of the system. All that would be stuff that we would still need to work on. If we move this forward, if the board says move forward, we send the letter, and if they came back and said, yeah, we're willing to talk about it, we would have to negotiate, work all that out, and then bring it back to the board, in terms of what a real pricing would be, and all the related items that I just mentioned, as well as other items. So, I want to make sure that the board was clear that, you know, this, we're bringing this because we're trying to have a fail-safe, not move forward on something that, you know, the board wouldn't have had an interest with. Once again, you know, we'd be trying to do an expansion, figuring that we would have been utilizing, the board would have been utilizing its capacity for the rate, current ratepayers. And so if we were to expand the facility, it does not eliminate the potential of what we're doing with the Defense Department and the MIR grant. Those are separate dialogues that would happen at, at future times, so I just, we're available to answer any questions on any of this that you might have.
Okay, Commissioners, questions? No, I appreciate the Space Florers here, so we may have questions for you, okay? You're prepared for that. Okay, let's do first, questions for staff. Other questions for staff?
I have one. I have two.
Go ahead, Commissioner Goodson.
Thank you. If it's $130 million, and if they built their own plant and handled their own stuff, what would the cost be to them? Roughly, just estimate, everything's an estimate.
I, you know, there's a lot of conditions with that, Commissioner, because obviously, I don't know what their site condition is.
Just assume it's perfect, just assume something, because are you telling me they're getting a wonderful deal?
I, I think we're getting a, I think it's a, I, I don't have a number to compare with, with what regard to their cost would be.
Wouldn't we want to know that? Because if you're giving them 130 million, and their cost would be 300 million, aren't they getting a hell of a deal? Yes, thank you. Now, can you tell, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sir, can I help you out on that one?
Yeah, how much?
Because I, I will tell you, I went up to the meeting with Space Florida, and we're sitting around, you know, the big table, and just started to add up the things that they would have to do. And of course, in full disclosure here, Eddie doesn't have all of the factors, we don't know everything up there. But we very quickly got to a number that was something like close to a quarter of a billion dollars.
So they're getting a hell of a deal?
It's, it's, it's...
They've sat there 70 years, and all of a sudden, they're getting a fantastic deal.
I think the rational choice, the rational choice for them is, is hooking up to Sykes Creek.
No, that's our choice. They want to do it because if it's 700 million, I'd want to do it for 132.
Okay.
But that's me.
The lesser cost option for them would be that.
A hell of a less. Now, another question. Under industrial pretreatment, each sewer account with Space Florida will be responsible to report wastewater flow that, prior to the connection, provide the industrial treatment process. Equipment that will be implemented to assure no distribution in the county system. If you know anything about government, that's, that's a hell of a statement, implemented? Are you telling me that's going, the equipment has to be on their site prior to them allowing one gallon to flow south?
Yes, sir. And that's, that's not unusual when you do an industrial pretreatment program. Part of the reason of that is because every, every location will have a different dynamic that would be reporting, and this would be language that we would really tighten up with regard, if we proceeded to an agreement form. The, the protocol is if there is any kind of disruption at the treatment plant, the reason too why we do that is there would be sampling points that we could go and actually do grab samples to see if there was any, you know, basically who the culprit is.
Okay. Chair, may I have one more?
For a question, yes, sir.
What happens if it, if it is contaminated industrial waste and it's in the line headed to the sewer plant on Merritt Island? What, do you bring in trucks and pump it out and take it back up there and give it to them? What do you do?
So we would continue to, we would continue to treat it as best we could. We would obviously dispose of it through the deep injection well. And again, when we, this would be language with regard to if we proceeded in an agreement form, we would talk about repercussions of any violations that would occur.
Now, don't you get, Chair, I'm sorry. Chair, may I have another one?
Go ahead, sir.
Don't you get fined by the DEP the minute they say something is bad in that sewage?
Yes, sir, we would get a consent order.
Go ahead.
You, you would have to have indemnification language from Space Florida for any violations that occurred.
Okay. I think that's it for now.
Other questions for staff? Are there, are there questions for...
I have a question, I'm so sorry.
Commissioner Delaney.
Is there a way to guarantee that we know if and when there were a problem with the industrial waste? Is there, is there a way, after it leaves Space Florida land and heads to Merritt Island, how do we prove that it's them?
So it's, it's all about, you know, the, the first, the first symptom is when we see a disruption at the treatment plant, and obviously, the operators would know if there was something biological occurring. As soon as that occurs, we have, we would have a protocol set up where grab samples at any known industrial pretreatment site would occur. That's why we, you know, it was outlined in the letter about every facility having it, rather than a common, because if you do it as a common, then it's hard to define, like which of the accounts would it occur? So that's how we, you know, we could, you know, when we go through the agreement, we can talk about, there's, there's, there's sampling when an occurrence occurs, but there's still sampling when an occurrence doesn't occur, and we would define the frequency, and we would use those as, you know, preventative measures.
Is there a way that we could be the ones to choose who does the testing?
That could be terms in the agreement, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Eddie? Are there questions for Space Florida? Okay. Mike, Dale, somebody, both of you?
Both available.
Okay. Dale?
Commissioners, I'm Dale Ketchum of Space Florida, I live in 1175 Shady Lane, Merritt Island, Florida. Lifelong Brevardian.
Questions for Dale?
Yeah, I'd love to have, how do you feel about the letter? Have you read the letter?
Yes. It's exactly what we wanted. We asked the county, give us a price. We've said from the very beginning, put it in writing numerous times, we have a need for additional wastewater treatment plant to continue to grow the Cape. We have absolutely no expectation that anybody other than us will pay for that additional impact. We have resources, Tallahassee and Washington are both very anxious to see this happen because this is a national imperative to continue to grow the Cape. And we're, you know, we're ready to negotiate the issues of industrial wastewater, any sort of contamination. There are hundreds of wastewater treatment facilities across the country. This is not a problem that is unique to Brevard County. I'm not a technical person in wastewater, but I can assure you that all of these issues are easily addressable, are addressed at hundreds of locations around the country, and we are more than happy to negotiate an agreeable package with the county to get this done.
Commissioner Atkinson had light before your service.
That's fine.
Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you. So, a crisis of yours has become ours. What are we doing? What are your thoughts on when this reaches capacity? Do you guys have a plan for what you're doing after this doesn't work anymore?
Well, we've been working with a number of people for a long time on a broader regional approach, and we're particularly excited about that because that brings in even more other people's money from Tallahassee and Washington to address a challenge. We, we consider ourselves part of Brevard County. The, the fact that the federal government has not kept up sufficiently to accommodate the commercial growth is a challenge for all of us. But in their defense, I don't think anybody expected the commercial space industry to blossom the way it has. So we're, you know, it's, it's a challenge, it can be addressed, it's, you know, it's not on fire yet, but if we don't do anything, it will be. But this is all manageable, the schedules that can work right now will work, and we're anxious to move forward. I hope that answers your question.
Is that an old light, Commissioner Delaney?
I was just waiting for your turn.
Okay. Commissioner Delaney.
I had a question about the cost of this, and if it turns out to be much more expensive, is there, is there room in the contract that will be presented to us eventually, actual costs versus estimated costs?
I, I would anticipate that would very much be a part of the negotiations with the county. I think you would find if you look at what the prices that are being paid for similar facilities throughout the state of Florida right now, there's lots of margin in that money.
Right.
But, again, that's part of the negotiation. That's what we want to do with the county, is sit down and, and move forward to make this work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Altman.
I, I know we're looking at launch schedules, and incredibly exciting opportunities are about to move to the Cape. I would assume that we didn't include the possibility of NASA moving its headquarters to Kennedy Space Center, would, would that growth be included in these numbers?
We could accommodate that, because, again, NASA headquarters, it's a federal bureaucracy, so most of the waste coming out of that building is going to be domestic, which is exactly what a wastewater treatment facility needs.
Okay.
We can, again, we can adjust for that, we are pursuing that, as per the governor's directive. We were looking at that even in advance. But, again, these are all problems that can be managed, this is nothing out of the ordinary.
Thank you.
Commissioner Goodson, now, was that a new light? Okay, he, he just didn't hit his light. Commissioner Goodson.
I've known you a long time, and it's really, I find it interesting that you're not familiar with wastewater, but you're an expert on BS.
I, I am a philosophy major, so yes, we...
Now, can you tell me, in 70 years, NASA did nothing? No planning for 70 years, since the 50s on...
NASA had its own wastewater treatment facility for the Apollo program.
And it's no longer...
They decided it was easier to just ship it all over to Space Force Station.
Now, Chair, now, you have the two richest men in the world, okay? And they can't build their own sewer plant.
That's certainly a possibility, but it would be, again, because we are part of Brevard County, and it is an opportunity for additional other people's money to go into facilities, it would be better to be dealing with this, in our opinion, as a regional effort to grow the community collectively, because it's much bigger than wastewater.
Okay. Chairman, one more, and I'll leave him alone, I'll leave him alone. And I guess you are aware, there's a federal law that says you can't tax federal land, okay? Land tax. But you can tax structures.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And last year, I think, I don't know, Blue Origin then paid, and SpaceX about $6 million, so half of it went to the school board and half went to the county, is that correct, Frank? Something like that?
Something close to that.
Something close to that, okay? So therefore, thank you for that little bit of input. But be careful on how you say you're part of Brevard County, because, you know, here's what I'm going to say too, Board, best time in our life to put some of the North Merritt Island water back on NASA. Make that a condition too, because they are adamant, they don't even want to talk to us about helping drain into a ditch that was there prior to NASA's existence. So if you don't get them now, you'll never get them. So you can sell that, sir?
We aren't NASA, NASA is its own...
But you have the tie-ins, you have the technical, you know...
We have responsibility for the overall Cape Canaveral Spaceport. Our jurisdiction and our ethical and responsibility is for the management of the whole system, which includes everybody outside, because everybody works on, no one lives at KSC or the Space Center, they all work in our communities.
If you want us to handle your poop, then you handle some of the water on North Merritt Island, I would make that a contingency, okay?
We, we would be happy to try to work with NASA on that. Because we, we have tried to help, I think, before with that.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ketchum.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodson.
You basically said nothing, that's why you're good at bullshit.
Got a degree in it.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Delaney.
Frank, I would like that added.
I just wanted to ask, for the public's sake, if there were a, an issue with the industrial waste that came from, from Space Florida lands, it says something in here about penalties, but from what we've seen in the past of penalties, that sometimes is very little compared to the damage that's done. So, Ken, I would like to see in this, in the, in the final contract, something that not only says that Space Florida would have to fix the problem, but then unfortunately also penalties for having Brevard County deal with all of that. And so is that something that Space Florida would be okay with?
I have to think, in negotiating this, again, I would default to the fact that this is not a unique problem. There are hundreds of other facilities across the country that deal with similar problems. I have to think there is a mechanism, an existing template, and best practices for addressing just that need, and we, we want to make sure that our agreement with the county is something you guys are happy with, because, you know, there's more to all of this growth that's occurring out there than just wastewater.
For sure.
So we're looking at this as a long-term partnership, because again, Brevard County is Brevard County because of what's going on out there. And we want to continue to see that growth be beneficial to everybody.
Right.
So, so good, solid agreements are a big part of making sure that happens in the future.
Great. And I would also like to mimic what Commissioner Goodson said, I think that the stormwater issue is equally as important to our residents as this wastewater issue, so that I hope will be a big part of this conversation.
That, that, again, that's a NASA issue, we, we're not the landlords out there, we can't give you access to canals that are on theirs, we understand the problem, we would like to help, and we will continue, but I can't comment about something that isn't our responsibility.
Well, out to the, to the universe out there who's listening to this, I hope that NASA is willing to come to the table and talk to us about this.
I hope so too. We will certainly encourage them to do so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Goodson, I'd say something just real quick. Going to meet with our new congressman here soon, and I'll mention that, okay, about the storm, the stormwater in Merritt Island, okay? And if anybody else is going to meet with, with him before he goes up, well, we'll do that too, certainly. Sir, I do have a question for you since you're here. You know, we have this, this date that you wanted from us, February 1st, that we make a decision. And I think I asked when I was up there at Space Florida if you're pursuing a, an appropriation from the legislature. So I just have to assume, since we've given you a sort of a list, what you asked for and staff came up with, and I understand it, because if I were sitting in a committee room and during appropriations, I'd need to defend that kind of amount of money. Is, is that what you anticipate this legislative session, making that, that kind of ask?
Yes, we anticipate making a significant ask of the legislature to move this forward.
Okay, all right.
Because they have expressed an interest in doing, helping as well.
You've not seen a big ask like that?
Yeah, but it was hidden much better.
We're transparent.
Commissioner Delaney.
Thank you. Just while we're talking about this conversation, I just wanted to put it out there that I've received a lot of concerns from my community about the potential of a regional plant. And I just kind of wanted to put it on the record that before that is decided, there's going to be a lot of public input, there's going to be a lot of conversation and negotiation and all of that. And that's not the only option moving forward as well. So, you know, I, I just wanted to put that out there. And, you know, if you wouldn't mind saying your piece about that too, so that we have both sides on the record saying, you know, for the, for the public.
I, I guess the best way to approach that is, there have been numerous efforts led by others than us to address long-term wastewater treatment issues which confront every community and certainly here in Brevard County, particularly North Brevard as I understand it. And the concept of that advanced regional wastewater treatment facility was part of studies and things of that nature. It was conceptual at best because it was a very first step in, in learning that. And we're happy to continue to participate in whatever looks like it's best for everybody. We, like I said, Commissioner Goodson might not think we're in Brevard, but we do. I think if, the goal is, our responsibility is, is a vibrant, thriving commercial spaceport. That happens because people are living outside the fence and are happy and are working and are living. Having a good environment, a good community is absolutely essential because keeping the talent that's necessary to continue to grow this, you have to have a good quality of life. So you have to have clean water, you know, a healthy river, good housing. All of that is a part of what we see as our responsibility. I hope that makes sense.
Thank you. And I hope that our state and federal partners are listening to this and, and hear this because this is a, this, this is very strategic for our national security. It's for the space race, for all of these great things that we're doing here, but we can't forget the people who live here.
Absolutely. And we will be the first ones in the door in Tallahassee and Washington making that case.
Mr. Goodson.
Yes. Can you tell me, what is your appropriation request?
It was nebulous. I think it was about 75 million.
That's all out of, you know, so therefore you're going to pony up 65?
It, it was, I guess, I guess the best way to explain it is, it was a placeholder.
Okay. And then what do you think you're going to request? The full amount?
I'll be honest with you, I, I don't want to answer that because it will be a decision collectively.
Out of the audience came one word, transparency.
Well, I don't know. I can't tell you what I don't know.
Will it be a public record soon, sir? I don't, no disrespect.
Yes.
But very, very soon it will be a public record.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Once it has a bill number, it becomes a public record.
Oh, absolutely. No, I mean, I, I just don't know myself. It's got to happen quickly because...
Uh-oh, uh-oh, here comes the answers.
Let me jump in, because I, in Dale's defense, Mike Miller, worked with Space Florida, Vice President of External Affairs, government.
Oh, yeah.
So what we're working on right now is this number that you're providing to us. And then what we're going to do is we're going to work with the governor's office and the legislature to, whether it's 75 million or 130 million or even more, we have not determined that until we had this conversation. So we need to have this, I know we're getting up against the deadline for the filing, but we also have the governor's recommended budget. We also have the opportunity to work with both House and Senate leadership and the Department of Transportation and Commerce and even Education, because that's part of the, one of the secretaries that came to our meeting. We want to collectively make this a group effort, not only for wastewater, but for the entire community, so that the ask itself is still being made.
Chair, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
You know, I, I understand everything you said, sounds great. But if you were to ask for $160 million of our taxpayers' money for other stuff we desperately need, like roads, bridges, stuff like that in this county, would you find that strange from the two richest men in the world?
Well, Commissioner, I can't speak to the two richest men in the world, but I can speak to the state's priorities, and space is one of the state's priorities. And so we are looking at this as an industry that we want to lead the world in, as Commissioner Delaney said. This is national security. This is the opportunity for us to go further than we ever thought, and we can do that only in one place in the United States of America, that's right here.
I thought Texas was kind of good too, but not...
Not better than Brevard.
No, we, we...
We surpassed them. Okay. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Let's make sure we all follow the budget.
Yes. We'll be watching it.
Understand.
Those of us who worked up there will be watching it very closely. All right. Is that it for the questions? You have one more? No, Gerald, Gerald Sut? I'm curious, can it come out of a committee or does it have to have, has to have a sponsor?
It would have to have a sponsor.
In both, in both chambers?
Who's your sponsor, Ray?
As matter of fact, Commissioner, may I? So we don't, this is not, we're not in the position where we're actually sponsoring a legislative ask at this point. Nope. This is, our conversation right now is to go back per the meeting we had in December to talk to all of our agencies and then talk to the legislature and collectively figure out, that's why Dale's, when you asked Dale that question, he was not sure where, because we have to find out, not only are we going to do it through an agency budget, the governor's recommended budget, and then the legislature. So that chopping up, if you will, of the ask is still to be determined. And so that, that's what we're doing right now. And then, yes, we will have to have a bill sponsor, both in the House and the Senate. And we have lots of friends in the legislature, not only in this community, but around the state, that care about aerospace. So I do feel like that's still to be determined, and we will, like, like Chair Felton said, that's going to be something interesting to watch, but we're going to work very hard to make sure we get that number.
That's, that's why we needed the number by February 1st. It gives us the opportunity to be creative because clearly Tallahassee, this is very important. We'll figure out the clever way to make it happen.
Commissioner Altman.
I would just say, this is a beautiful example of government working together, and I really appreciate the work Space Florida's done and the staff on a project that's probably one of the most exciting things that ever happened to, to Florida. I, I think a lot of the budget numbers will have to be fleshed out because ratepayers and users will pay for the, probably the vast majority of, of this revenue stream. So determining how much the users, such as SpaceX or Blue or NASA, whoever, they will be paying rates, and they will have to be rates that are fair to the people of Florida, people of Brevard. So imagine there's going to be a lot of, a lot of work on these budget numbers. And it could be a, it could be, I assume it could be a member project, or it could come out of a state agency as well, part of a bigger picture. What I'm hearing, this is, this is going right up to the top. This is a national priority, this is a national security priority as well as a Florida one.
It's going to come out of Commerce package. I feel pretty confident of that.
And if I could, Commissioner, and Senator, Representative, you know better than all of us up here, that process. So I do believe that it is, is a multi-step process, that we're going to use the agencies, we're going to use the legislature, we're going to use our, our friends. And to your point, Chair Goodson, or Commissioner Goodson, we are going to, it is a ratepayer situation out there as well. And so what, whatever SpaceX, Blue Origin, or any space entity is going to be using in terms of industrial wastewater, cleaning it, getting it to, to the facility at Sykes Creek clean, that is going to be their responsibility regardless of the cost. So I do feel like there will be participation at all levels.
Any other questions for Space Florida? We do have a few cards. All right, we're going to go to the cards. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Sullivan.
Yes, sir. Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So as a business analyst, the first thing I look at when I read this, all the costs are estimated. I mean, this is a, a dart at, at best at this point. It's a guesstimate. And so you're going to go and you're going to get legislation, you're going to get money to come in, and you don't know the actual number. These guys are talking about OPM, other people's money, tax money, okay? But the fact is that they have been irresponsible. And I've read, I've done records requests for the Blue Origin contract, it says right in there, they're talking about potentially future use of our Brevard County utilities. So this has been in their mind for a long time. And coming here and pretending that this is, this is, you know, an urgent thing, when you got to build and make all these changes to that plant and to build a pipe to, to your facility, they could build their own. And you know what catches me is, catch them here after a previous meeting saying, oh, it's not really industrial wastewater. So you don't have any control over what they're doing on the other side. You don't have control over what you're going to be dealing with, and you have no way to pay for that. As a business analyst, I just say, you know, this is a bad deal. Let's talk about the big secret. The big secret in Brevard County is that, you know, taxes aren't paid. Comment was made, oh, it's federal land, they don't pay taxes. Well, actually, I've looked up federal law, and when you lease it to private entities, including military, DOD land, then those entities pay. The reality here is, Space Florida is an independent special district, which means they are a taxing district. They choose not to levy any taxes. And that's what's created this problem. Let's use OPM, let's put it on the, let's put it on, ultimately, the taxpayers are footing this bill, not the two richest men in the world. And you'll have no control and no way for them to pay until they pony up and they start doing some taxation. This is from the Blue Origin, about how they don't pay taxes. They don't even pay taxes, they do this, this, this deal. Let's talk about what is coming. I'm wearing a American flag and an eagle for a reason. America first. This is Airbus coming. This is the secret deal for 1.2, 1.8 billion dollars that's coming here. And there's going to be a lot more growth that you're not even figuring out how that's going to get paid. And this company is largely owned by France and Germany, and I suspect building the satellites like was just launched for UAE, China's friend, UAE, coming here and going to be building satellites, launching from here. How about we have two tax rates? We have one for America first, and we have one for these foreign entities coming here on American territory and expecting the ratepayers here in Brevard County to pick up and pay for the, the infrastructure needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Ratterman.
Mr.?
I'm sorry. Commissioner Delaney.
I just had a comment. I didn't know if maybe staff could start looking into kind of that America first argument of, are we promoting American businesses here in Brevard? You know, what are we doing in that respect? I'd, I'd really love to, to investigate that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ratterman.
Hi. Jack Ratterman, North Merritt Island Homeowners Association, and I'm also with the North Merritt Island Special Dependence District Board. First off, I'd like to say that SpaceX, NASA, and Blue Origin, they're not good neighbors. Everything they've built out there, they pushed their floodwater, their stormwater south to Merritt Island. Goes all to Pine Island Road, and started to flood them again. Goes to Broad Acres, and after the last two hurricanes, those folks couldn't get to their home unless they had a four-wheel truck. So the history is that they're not looking out after the needs of the citizens or North Merritt Island. And the 130 million dollars, I think there ought to be a line in there that says all costs, all costs. If it goes above 130 million dollars, we have all costs in there, then that'll, that'll make them worry about what, what they're going to spend. And then it, I took a look at their letter that they sent us, and I quote, "Space Florida will be responsible to report with industry, what industrial waste will flow, and they will do the, the monitoring." So now we're letting the fox guard the hen house. They're going to tell us what kind of industrial waste they're pumping to us? You know, I, I'm not real comfortable with that. Then it says, can Merritt Island, can we take all this waste from NASA? You know, we have a 2,000-foot deep injection well that goes below the Accafer. And if any of that industrial waste gets there, it'll go below the Accafer too. I guess really the last thing I have is that I appreciate all the effort that the county commission works for the community. And I'd like to note Mr. Altman's discussion this morning about the Challenger disaster. This is the day. And the Barge Canal Bridge is named Christie McAuliffe Memorial Bridge. And because of his long involvement with the space industry and with NASA, I think he should disqualify himself for many votes on this issue because of that, that I don't think he could separate his last relationships from this very important issue. Thank you.
Darren May.
Hopefully it's still morning. It's been a long day. Hopefully I am going to represent somewhere in the middle for this. Just real quick background, extremely quick, is grew up here, went to school, FIT, worked here, I've worked in the space industry, actually being involved with most of the environmental compliance and permitting for these facilities we're talking about. We've been involved with, as my career, I've been involved with all the construction aspects, the design reviews, all the things you've had to go through with us. So I've been through this many times, many discussions for this. Just to clearly state, I'm no longer working for them, I'm not speaking for anybody, I'm speaking on my own behalf as a citizen growing up here. And I'd like to try to see about, try to get us more in the balance of the middle of trying to find solutions. We know we're going to have to deal with things, but we have a lot of things to deal with. I, I know I'm not going to have enough time, I'm going to try to run through real quick, but I wanted to just hit a few points in the letter that you have proposed. And a lot of it has to come down with the flow. I mean, just real quickly, the historical flows we've had at the Cape and its public record, it's been roughly about 500,000 to 600,000 gallons per day. That's for both Kennedy and Cape. That was also shuttle era to now. Okay, so the amounts we're talking about going from that 0.27 to 0.7, it does seem rather large, you know, for the percent that we're talking about of existing utilities. So that does lead to the question again, how much of that could be potentially industrial wastewater again? There's a lot of industrial wastewater components, won't get into that, it's too much to get to, but... So the, the flows and all that stuff has to be addressed, and I think it's something that definitely the public should be involved with and that, as Ms. Delaney has mentioned before. About the ownership for the lift stations, is there going to be easements, things like that, right of ways? How's that property going to be coming through? Because again, if spills happen, things occurred. Back to, again, how are you going to basically trace it back to it? One of the recommendations in here is about metering based on water, which is a typical thing for a city. This is a different environment working at the Cape. You know, the Cape's a different, different animal. It is special. Here in Vandenberg, two different, completely different animals. It's not an oral flow, not dural, it doesn't act the same way, it's stair steps. That's why we plan, you know, to do those kind of things. I'm probably just not going to have enough time to go over all the things, because I could hit every single topic you guys have talked about. I really would like to do that. My suggestion is to have that public input. I think there needs to be, if not a workshop, a poster session in between this and making a final decision, so you can get a lot of this input, because we have a lot of people in the community that worked in this industry. I do have one example I wanted to give to you guys as an option, which is a potential for doing the agreement, is you don't necessarily always have to have a gigantic plant to do this stuff. And I've always been a big fan of decentralized wastewater treatment. One option is to have that treatment, and there's one example, it's called Hasselwood 18th, which is in Portland, Oregon, done in 2015, real quick, that it basically has an agreement that they hook to the cities of sewer, but for sewer connection, but they have zero discharge, and they do it onsite for a four-block section for their, their commerce area. And if I could just finish real quick, I'm almost done. Just, and what it basically is an agreement was, they have to have a connection to sewer, but it's for... but it's for basically maintenance and emergency. The incentive they put on that basically was to put, basically an incentive that if you don't discharge, you got credits back. They were able to get millions of dollars of credit as an incentive for that company to come in and do the extra work. We don't have a lot of incentives for a commercial to do that kind of stuff when we're doing things like this. So there's ways to put that incentive in, in front, to dangle the carrot, to basically say, you could maybe have a connection, but can we reduce it? But I think we need to definitely look at volumes and talk about the constituents for that. And I do have copies, if I could possibly pass it out to everybody, just for that, just for reference.
Thank you, sir.
My chief of staff is sitting right over there. Would you mind giving her your contact information? Thank you.
All right, sir. Okay, commissioners, that was the end of the cards. We're in discussion. Remember, we're being asked to just approve the letter today that's going to Space Florida, so discussion on the item. Commissioners, Delaney.
I don't really have more discussion on this item, other than I just wanted to put it out there. Negotiation and final contract will have board participation and final decision on the contract.
Yes.
So nothing will be accepted without all of our input, without public input, and a totally transparent situation going on.
Agreed. Thanks for pointing that out. I was going to say pretty much the same thing, but you said it better. Okay. Other, other discussion. Is there a motion to approve the draft letter?
Motion to approve the draft letter.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Atkinson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Delaney. Clerk, go call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goodson?
Yes.
Chair Felton?
Yes. We'll show that approved 5-0. Thank you, commissioners, very much. We will move into, I think I see Billy making his way up here. I think Commissioner Virginia is going to come up afterward, I believe. Commissioners, we're on J3. Billy?
Sir?
You're recognized.
Good morning, Chair. This is actually Commissioner Delaney's item out of District 1. I'm here to answer any questions and respond to any, any issues.
Okay, Commissioner Delaney, you want to sort of introduce your item?
Sure.
Okay.
As everybody's aware, our impact fees haven't been updated in many years. And so I just felt like it's important to get this ball rolling if this is something the board decides to look at, because there's quite a lengthy process of getting this done. So the sooner the better that we could get to the, to a better place. We, my opinion is, is that growth doesn't happen forever. Eventually, we will be completely built out, and this is, this is the time to get us to a better place, in my opinion. And I've asked Billy if you don't mind to just do a short little presentation about where we are, where, where we came from, all that kind of stuff, as far as impact fees go.
I'd be happy to, Commissioner. So Brevard County last conducted an impact fee study in 2015 at a cost of about $164,000. That study was not limited to fire and EMS. It also included transportation, correctional, education, and libraries, in addition to EMS and fire. In September of 2016, the board accepted that impact fee study, but retained the then-current fee schedule. In other words, it did not act on that study's findings. Instead, it instituted 100% of the, of the previous 2001 rates. So that's where we remain today, as far as the EMS and fire rates. They were last amended in 2001. The reason the board did that at the time was the moratorium on impact fees, and that's during the same discussion that was lifted. So I believe the board did not feel like it was appropriate to increase the fees at the same time as it was lifting the moratorium. So that leads us to where we are today. If the board were to consider increasing any impact fees, including fire EMS, it would have to do a study first, because this, our current data is more than four years old, which is the threshold in the statute. The statute lays out numerous benchmarks, and the statute I'm referring to is known as the Florida Impact Fee Act. It lays out numerous benchmarks when increasing fees. For example, if you used to justify a fee, fee increase, the study must be adopted within one year of initiation of the study. So it's really something to keep in mind. It's, it's a very strict timeline that goes along with these impact fees. There's two processes for increasing the impact fee. One, I'm going to call the normal approval process. That's required to be done in increments, depending on the, the amount of the increase. But I'll note at the outset, I'm about to talk about 25%, 50%, and over 50%. But if the study only justifies a certain percentage, that's always going to be your not-to-exceed rate. But assuming a study has, supports an increase of an impact fee, the impact fee cannot be more than 25%. If it's done up to 25%, it has to be done in two equal increments, over two years. If it's between 25 and 50%, it has to be within four increments. Now, general, generally, the statute says, quote, "An impact fee increase may not exceed 50% of the current impact fee rate." However, it does provide for another process, which I'm about, I'll call the extraordinary approval process. It's kind of a, a second track. Assuming that study justifies that the increase, increase of more than 50% is necessary, you have to have adopted the study within one year. The study must expressly demonstrate the extraordinary circumstances necessitating the need to, to exceed those, those timeframe limitations, as well as the cost limitations that I just spoke about. There would have to be two publicly noticed workshops, and importantly, it would have to be approved by a supermajority vote. That's for any increase over 50%. Some other considerations that the board may want to consider is that, taken together, once a, once a study is adopted, it's good for one year to justify an increase over 50%, and four years to justify increases below 50%. Impact fees cannot be used to fund previously approved projects, and impact fees can only be used to fund the acquisition, construction, or improvement of capital facilities that has a rational nexus to new construction. Thank you.
Questions for Billy. Commissioner Delaney.
I just wanted to make it clear that I understand this correctly. All of our rates, except for the school board rate, are from 2001.
I believe solid waste in utilities, I would separate from that. All the other rates, including transportation, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Atkinson.
Billy, can you tell me the study that was done in 2015 that we didn't end up going with? How much did that cost the county?
About $165,000.
So can we assume that if we did this study, it would cost what?
It would be speculation, but I'm, I would, I would say, you know, double might be, it might be an estimate that I would throw out there.
Okay, thank you.
And is that for all of the fees, or is that just the fire and EMS?
That was all the fees, including educational, Commissioner. I did go back and look at, and tried to break out what EMS and fire would have been under that scope of services, and then include the general thing. And the best I could come up was 50,000. Whether that firm would have taken that job for 50,000, I don't know. But that, if you break out that cost, it would have been about 50,000.
Thank you.
I asked a similar question in my briefing about if you do the study, does it cover all the fees? So at least you'd be able to have that information at the end of that. So I think that was staff's sort of position then. Okay, any other, Commissioner? Okay, are, are there any other questions? Because we do, we do have a couple cards.
I got one, Chair.
Okay, sir.
Thank you. If they had adopted it in 215, 2015, how much money would it have raised? You can be close. I ain't going to hold you to it.
That might be a better question for Mr. Dennyoff here. I really don't know what the, because the board never wound up adopting it. I don't know what the rates, what the study could have justified.
And the reason for not adopting it, do you know?
Yeah, the board discussion at the time was, there was a moratorium in place. It was kind of coming out of the Great Recession, so to speak. And so the board, rather than lifting the moratorium and at the same time increasing rates, chose to go back to the previous rate.
And did I understand you, Chair, may I? Did I understand you correctly to say the funds that it raises cannot be used other than for new construction? Was that, was that correct?
New capital facilities related to the new, the impact of the new construction.
Related to the impact of the new construction. So what, what does that mean?
Well, there are very specific things that impact fees can be used for. It's highly restricted. For example, what it means, you could not use it for salaries or maintaining existing equipment, and things like that.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Any question, for a question?
It's my understanding that this is for, if, if the board decided to go with the whole study and for all of the different areas, rather than just fire and EMS, if we decided to go with an increased rate, that could go to roads, it could go to wastewater, it could, or, I'm sorry, solid waste, all these different things that would, that talk about growth and the impacts of the growth.
Yeah, each fund is treated individually. So if the study justifies any of those individual impacts, then the board would have that option.
There's no more questions. We do have two cards. Okay, Sandra Sullivan.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So first of all, going back to 2016, when it came before the board, where we were at, we had growth higher than the pre-boom. And at the time, just so you have a number, the transportation fee was recommended to increase for a single-family home by 67%, pretty significant. We have kicked this can down the road for so long, for decades, while we've had increases in transportation, in some years, 30% higher for asphalt paving, et cetera. We've had a lot of inflation. And essentially, the fiscal crisis that the, the county is largely in now is due to kicking the cost of growth down the road. And it's, it's coming to rear its really ugly head at this time, with more than $1 billion in transportation deficit, you know, billions in infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. Brevard's pretty poor in many respects. Just look at your buildings. So, but pertaining to this particular item, my recommendation would be to move forward with only a fire and EMS at this time, because as a small study, this one could be completed quick, more quickly. With others, I would recommend a full study for all of them. I want to just draw some information pertaining to fire and EMS specifically. When we were looking at the 1998 referendum for the fire and EMS, for county-wide EMS, the recommendation by the study at that time was to raise the, the $38 for EMS to $305 to bring it, to be comparable to the surrounding areas. So it's been a long time. So when you look at the county, we're bringing in about $100 for fire and EMS. And here's Lake County, which is slightly larger than us, with $766 as a comparison. The problem we're facing is in, in 2021, we had a 33% increase. At that time, we anticipated in 2025 that the cost of growth would be $6 million. In 2022, we were $620,000 as a cost of growth. And predict, in last year's budget for 2025 to 2028, it's predicted at 30 million. Now we're up to 48 million. And if we don't get ahead of this growth, we have very substantial tax increases coming to Brevard County residents. We would not be, what's happened with our fire budget is, we had a 33% increase in our fire assessment that was sold to us to address and bring those wages to be comparison. And so much of that has gone to, to addressing growth and not to addressing the promise that was made at that time. So I hope you'll move forward with this.
Thank you. Diana Johnson?
Hi. I'm Diana Johnson. I live on Merritt Island. The firefighters and paramedics have been there for me and my family many times. Every time I needed them, they came quick. This county needs to pay them accordingly. You talk about keeping your talent, let's keep this talent. We need this talent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, commissioners, discussion on this item. And I, and I think the, the action here would be that we would direct staff potentially to put out a request for a quote, right, for a study?
Yeah, procurement, RFP.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we're in discussion. Commissioner Delaney.
Thank you. I'm not sure if, if you all had the chance to look at some of the attachments that I put on here. It's just some of the, the other counties' impact fees and what they look like. St. Lucie County actually put together this nice little chart that made it really easy to look at. Out of these 22 counties, in the study that St. Lucie did, we are the third lowest, the 20th out of 22 counties. And when the formatting happened, this got kind of messed up. But this chart, St. Lucie County is not supposed to be factored into this average. The average, the average fee for all these counties, including St. Lucie's new revised fee, is $400. And we're at $93. And so these impact fees could go towards firehouses, ambulances, fire trucks, freeing up money for salaries. And we're down, last I heard, was six ambulances. So this money is desperately needed for the growth of our community, to be able to, to serve our people with a standard level of service. And I'm just going to make the pitch also for our other impact fees. We have a major deficit when it comes to our road infrastructure and our needs for our transportation. And so my first choice, I would love to do an impact fee study for everything. But if what we could do today would be fire and EMS, I, that would be okay too with me. Thank you.
Other discussion. Frank, I see you reaching for your mic.
I'm just going to suggest if the board wants to look at it, that you do a comprehensive and look at across the board all, because a lot of what you would be doing in the one and paying for the one is duplicative. So why would you pay a second time? You're going to see, when we have the workshop, one of the first workshops we're going to be presenting to the board is Public Works. And there are significant capacity issues. We've addressed a variety of things as it deals with maintenance, that we've made tremendous progress in that area. Capacity, it's been at the cost of capacity. So if the board's going to look at it, I would just suggest that you might want to look at it, a single RFP, and go across the board and look at what the consultant can provide for the board, so you have an idea of what the limits are of where you could go.
Okay, I, I agree with that assessment. Okay. Any other discussion on this? Is there a motion? And in your motion, you want to make it so that we look at all the fees?
Sure.
Want to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
If I could just ask one question.
I didn't know if you were reaching for a motion.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
If I could just ask one question about the RFP process. Well, Frank, will that be just our vendors of record, or will it go out to everybody?
No, it goes out to everyone.
Okay, great.
And we would be even happy to bring it back to the board, so you can see the RFP. You know, we'll get it prepared, and we can send it out and let the board see it, if the board has an interest in that. If time is more of the essence, then you can just authorize today for us to do it. And when we do it, we'll send it out, similar to what was done in 2015. And we would, you know, depending on what the board authorizes, you know, obviously, the funding for it, we'll identify that and come back to the board. So what are the board's pleasures?
Okay.
Ready?
Yep, Commissioner?
I'd like to make a motion to go out for RFP for our impact fee study.
And that's comprehensive?
Yes, comprehensive.
Oh, okay, very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Delaney. Is there a second? We have a motion by Commissioner Delaney, is there a second? Is there a second to the motion, to do the RFP for impact fees?
Okay, we'll bring this up at another time. Okay, Commissioner Delaney?
Could we have discussion about that?
You're, you're welcome to, to lobby your fellow Commissioners. Go ahead.
Sure. I'm, I'm, I'm a little surprised at this. And because of Sunshine, we can't talk about this outside of the public. And so I'm just curious if any of you would mind sharing what your concerns are, and, you know, if you have any other solutions to start combating our growth issues.
I personally didn't have a problem looking at this today, so, but I have to tell you as the chair, it's, it's not a, something that I, I want to start making seconds. So that's, but I, I think good information leads to good decision-making, so I don't have a problem with us looking at this this summer. So that's my input. When the study would come back.
I would, I would hope that we could get a larger cross-section of our community to get feedback before we embarked upon a study. Those who are in the construction industry, those who are working in affordable housing, which has become a significant problem, those who are fighting every day to afford to get into a home, the cost of housing has become serious. The larger economic discussion, I, I think it's worth looking at, but I, I would like to have a broader, broader section of the community to give input. I would have to think that this room would have been filled many times over, had we had a lot of different parts of our community knew that we're about to vote on an impact fee study. So that's my thought. Second, I would feel a little more comfortable if it, I know, I understand the benefit of looking at all the fees, but I, I would feel a little more comfortable if we were only looking at fire and EMS, because that has been debated and discussed, and it is an urgent issue that we know we have now. But I think it's better that we bring this at another meeting, so we give ample public notice before we discuss it.
It was on the agenda, in all fairness. Commissioner, would you, would you be amenable to bringing that back another date, or do you want to try to amend your motion for just the fire EMS impact fees?
I would like to amend my motion.
Okay, all right. Will you just say it one more time for the sake of the clerk?
Sure. I'd like to amend my motion to go out for our, RFP for our fire and EMS impact fees.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
All right, there's a second by Commissioner Altman. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
No.
Vice Chair Goodson?
No.
Chair Felton?
Yes. Okay, we'll show that passes 3-2. Virginia. Okay, Virginia's in the box. I guess you want me to read the results of the ones that we voted on for SOARL. And in the science sector, that's Donald Dice. In the technology sector, that is Richard Nipper. In the tourism, that's Laura Lee Thompson. In the lagoon commerce, that's Aaron Adams. In the economics, that's Frederick Goldstein. And then we have a three-way tie for the lagoon education outreach advocacy alternate. We have Stell Bailey, Frederick Goldstein, and Deborah Harmon. Now, I think Frederick Goldstein, though, is in the economics, right, finance area. So, you know, he can't be elected twice, right? So we'll, we'll remove him from consideration in the bottom part there. So we have Deborah Harmon and Stell Bailey. Want to give each one of them up-down vote? Is that what we ought to do? How should, how should we do this? Everybody want to take, take a moment and?
Yeah, I have extra sheets, if you want.
Can we just make a motion?
I'll tell you what, we'll, we'll make a motion, you make your motion. If it doesn't pass, then, then by default, it'll be the other person. Is it, is it that simple?
Thank you.
You'd need a second motion if the first motion fails.
Okay, we'll, we'll all play along then at that point, okay? Accept the results. Okay, Commissioner Delaney with your motion.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Stell Bailey to the advocacy alternate.
Okay. Is there, is there a second for Stell? Commissioner Altman.
I'd like to make a motion where you appoint Deborah Harmon.
I don't think there's a second for Stell.
I'll second that.
You'll second Deborah Harmon?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goodson?
Yes.
Chair Felton?
Yes. Congratulations to her. Okay, everyone, thank you for that. We will move into board report.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I believe, sorry, that motion was just for the three-way tie, so we still need a motion for the other five.
I'm sorry, you did say that.
And given that the, the ranking was to promote Don Dice, who is the league's current alternate, into the board's voting science seat, the league also provided a backup candidate, a backfill candidate, Bruce Larson, to backfill Don Dice's seat, so if that could be part of the board action.
Okay, so let me clarify. Bruce Larson would be the, the next league appointee. And then we have, by our, our votes, Richard Nipper in the technology, Laura Lee Thompson in tourism, lagoon commerce, Aaron Adams in economics, Frederick Goldstein, and then finally, lagoon education, we have Deborah Harmon. Is there a motion to accept all of those?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Delaney, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Altman. Clerk will call the roll on all of those.
Commissioner Delaney?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goodson?
Yes.
Chair Felton?
Yes. Okay, very good. Thank you, Commissioners. That passes 5-0. Okay. Now we're in board report. No, we're not. I don't think we have one. I, I'm sorry, Sandra, I don't have it, but you're welcome. I thought that was unusual, too.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So I want to go back to the big secret about Space Florida and the lack of taxation, one, them as an independent special district, and also the county's right to, as the local jurisdiction. They talk about national security, and that this federal land is exempt under national security. The thing is, not everything happening out in Space Florida is national security. So whatever percentage is national security, yeah, I get that, that's, that's an exemption. But not all businesses out there are national security, and we are launching a lot of stuff for other countries, particularly UAE, which is, is of concern to me. So I think we need to address that they pay their fair share of taxes. I believe that the contract that that is being negotiated right now, it's on bid on the county site, does not have a specification other than the study done by the EDC. That's not the way business is done. There's no bid, no specification document for that regional sewage plant. And my allegation here is that this is Agenda 2030 happening right here, that this contract is being parachuted for Brightline, which is majority-owned by UAE, as a toilet-to-tap facility by the globalist movement. America first. 2010, the, the property for the site planning and building permits for Space Florida was done through the city of Titusville, which is District 1, mainland District 1. Seems to me Space Florida's in District 2 on the barrier island, in the county jurisdiction, not in the city of Titusville jurisdiction. Now, why would that have happened? Well, when you read the, the Space Florida agreements with Blue Origin, just on Phase 2 alone, they brought in $7 million worth of fill. You know what the consequence of that is? On the floodplain hydrology study that the county did, they're no longer on the floodplain. Interesting. Well, that storm water on a 10-year floodplain has to go somewhere, doesn't it? So the 2018 small-area study shows that storm water is increasing the flooding in the North Merritt Island residents. So to Goodson's point, I very much respect what he said, that a negotiation with Space Florida must include taxes to address the impacts to the floodplain, because it's well documented. You guys are looking at litigation. Sit down to the table with Space Florida, and they need to pay their fair share of taxes, because it isn't just this that they're expanding. This is from the lagoon board. Look, they're expanding Space Florida and on the floodplain very dramatically. There's a lot more coming. And I'm going to say that the county, and particularly one of our Commissioners' staff was on staff of, of the county district when these under-the-table deals were made with Titusville. You guys created this problem.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board report. Frank, in board report.
I have no report.
Morris, in board report.
I have no report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Delaney, in board report.
No report.
Commissioner Altman. Commissioner Goodson.
None.
Commissioner Atkinson.
No report.
Okay. We did have our first TDC meeting the other day with me as the chair. It was pretty uneventful. I think we had more discussion on picking a vice chair. And, but we talked briefly about some of the issues raised by the board before, and we'll be revisiting some of the process that we brought up today, so that'll, that'll be coming in, in the future. And that was really about it for them, so. Okay, everybody, thank you today. I almost forgot. It's 11, it's 11:59, so let's, 15 minutes, we'll do the executive session, okay, for the board, okay?
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.